We'll call to order the Monday, November 14th Committee of the Hall for the City of Verona. And the roll call, read the roll. Alder Person Stewart.
Here.
Alder Person Lindar.
Here.
Alder Person Touche.
President.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Diaz.
Here.
Alder Person Steiner.
Here.
And we have Alders Doyle and McGilvery are excused this evening. We do have a quorum, so we will proceed with the Committee of the Hall. Next is public comment. Do we have anyone here from the public that wishes to speak? Anyone from the public that wishes to speak? I don't see anyone from the public wishing to speak. So with that, we will move on. Next, we have approval of the minutes from the September 9th. Committee of the Hall.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche, seconded by Mr. Stewart. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We are now on to the fifth agenda item, which is the presentation of the proposed 2017 city budget. Mr. Makarsky, if you would, please.
Thank you very much. With that, want to give some appreciation to the Finance Director and previous administrators and council members because what you'll see tonight is a reflection of probably management and policy decisions that have been moving forward over a number of years. With that, want to start off with some highlights of the budget. Probably the biggest one is this proposed budget is expected to reduce the city's tax rate by 10 percent. We'd be going from $6.705 dollars per thousand assessed value to $6.034 dollars per thousand assessed value. What does that mean to residents and businesses? Savings about $138, excuse me, $183 on a $272,000 assessed home, or $268 on a $400,000 assessed home. Also, a big part of the budget is additional personnel, including personnel for planning, facility maintenance, police support staff, administrative support staff, senior center support staff, library, community engagement, and economic development and park staff. Also, part of this budget are ways in which we're trying to reduce the amount of debt that will be borrowed. We're doing that in two ways. We're increasing the city's replacement funds by $230,000. That's an 82 percent increase. What that does is allow us to build up a fund so that we don't have to borrow as replacement equipment or mostly equipment breaks, we'll have a fund to help support that equipment. Also, increasing the funding of the city's levy for capital projects by over a million The more capital projects we can put in and pay for by the city's levy, the less borrowing we have to do. As a part of the budget and use of the one-time monies from the closure of the TIF number seven, we're proposing to reduce $2.8 million of old high-interest debt. That will alleviate a good amount of debt, and then also it helps to alleviate debt service from those notes. It also will set aside $2 million for an aquatic center and $600,000 for a splash pad. We're also recommending $500,000 to the Verona Economic Development Commission. The result, boy, I just can't speak today, revolving loan program for helping to develop and incentivize business development. We're also putting in a 2 percent cost of living increase for employees. And through the BTRB or the cable TV franchise fee, we're hoping to make improvements to the audio and visual system in council chambers and also some additions and improvements to the webpage with those monies. From the fund that's built up, we were going to set aside $100,000 to make improvements and then also replace components that if they fail, we're not going to be able to replace any longer. So both in here and in the control room, those funds will be able to improve the audio and visual system. And as, on that note, that's the reason I'm not down at the table right now. We're having an issue with the connection to the laptops down there. This is the only connection that's available for the presentation. So it's issues like that that continue to come up, and we can make improvements for more effective council chambers. What's providing the ability for us to reduce the tax rate and make additional increases and improvements throughout the city? If you look at the property tax base, in 2016, we've got, we see a 13.3 percent in the non-TIF equalized value. This is the third year that we see a substantial increase, starting in 2014. To give kind of a perspective on the reduced tax rate, you see in the blue the other cities in this area. Those are the 2016 numbers. Not all cities had an estimated or an approved tax rate yet. But if we would have kept our rate the same at 6.7, we would have been third from the right. With the reduced down to 6.03, you see that we'll be lower than the other cities in the Over time, want to look at how big of a drop is 10 percent? If you look from 2010, the tax rate continued to increase. With this 10 percent drop, will be, our tax rate will be going back to very close to the 2010 tax rate. Other property tax revenues, I'm sorry, non-property tax revenues that are included into the budget, intergovernmental aid. Shared revenue from the state is nearly flat. We see just a minor reduction, but we're receiving $132,000 from shared revenue. Expenditure restraint is, we see an increase in this year's revenue of $227,517. Last year's budget qualified for this program, and that provided us with the $227,000. The 2017 budget will not qualify for two reasons. One, because of the substantial increase in the revenue, and also they've modified the program so that it takes into consideration all of the funds, whereas in the past, it was just looking at the general fund. So...
So we're going to zero for...
That's correct. We'll have to...
What do we, do we think we're going to be in the same spot for 2018, or do we even have a guess on what, you know, after we get this large increment this year, what do we think will happen in the future?
My response to that is, moving forward after this year, we'd be looking at more like we were historically.
Okay.
This is a one-time, one-time adjustment for us, but I would say we'd be back to normal years.
Though it would be a little bit harder for us to do that because of the change that they made, that they look at all the funds rather than just the general fund as they did in the past.
I guess the question I have for Mr. Touche is, did you mean specifically on expenditure restraint or the entire budget?
Expenditure restraint.
Oh, specifically on expenditure restraint. We may be able to, in future years, get back into the program, but definitely not for next year.
Right.
Yeah, given our situation, makes 100 percent sense. Thank you. Thank you.
Highway aid has increased by over 11 percent. That's the funds that the Department of Transportation provides us for the maintenance of our streets and what we, how we've maintained our streets. Other major revenues, the utility payment in lieu of taxes is looking to increase to $725,000. That's the water utilities payment in lieu of taxes on their property that they own. So as our water system increases, and this payment in lieu of taxes will also increase. Building permit fees, we're projecting it to show a reduction. That's because a lot of the larger projects have gone through the Epics and a couple of the other technology park projects have already gone through the permit process, and we see kind of a slow time. But we do have a lot of projects waiting for the permit process. So we expect that this number will be higher than that. We just don't know what the numbers are until the projects move along a little bit further. But we'll know probably within the next few months, a number of bigger projects that will modify this number. Here's a graphical representation of revenues into the general fund. As you see, the property taxes are the biggest portion of the budgets, over 70 percent. You then have smaller portions for state highway, fines and fees, permits, charge for services, and other revenue sources. Expenditures, when you're looking at the general fund, as typical to all municipalities, public safety, it's police and fire are usually the biggest components of the budget. Here, it's over 41 percent. Public works is a little over 17 percent. And parks and rec, around 11 percent. And then general fund is around 14 percent. So you get a kind of an idea of where the, whether the general fund monies are going to.
Is the library under general fund?
No, it's not.
Wherever is that?
It's in the, it's a library fund. It would be...
So it's not an expenditure?
We'd be expending to it.
It's more emergency.
I guess it would probably be in the general fund transfers. When you're looking at all the budget funds, the biggest expenditures are expected to be the capital projects, 26 percent. The general fund itself is 20 percent. Debt service, 16.8 percent. Another graphical example of how the funds will be expended, not just general fund, but The property tax levy this year's is proposed to be $13,0085,092. That's a 22 percent increase based on the increase in assets, assessed values. Again, the estimated mill rate will be 6.043. That's a 10 percent reduction. And again, the same information that was provided before. So it's a substantial decrease for property owners. When you're looking at the general fund, or all the funds and how the levy breaks out, general fund shows an increase of almost a million dollars, or a 24.6 percent increase. Library debt service is reduced as the notes are paid off for the library. That amount is dropping. That's helping us to also reduce the tax rate. Some of the other changes, capital replacement funds, again, we're showing an increase. And fire departments, also a smaller increase in the levy, and also Fitch Roma EMS. Overall, it's a 22.14 percent increase. Again, $2.3 million above 2016. Yes?
Just a quick question, Jeff. On the library debt service, is that just at a standard paydown, that reduction there and that change? Or is that including some of the excess debt prorated towards this?
No, it was just the normal.
The normal?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Lindar.
Are the numbers correct for that refuse recycling?
Yes, it is. And I tried to get a history on that. It's based, the levy for refuse recycling is based on the calculations for what's going to be either personnel or equipment for the use of recycling refuse for public works. 2016, it was $1,000 or $1,300. So in this budget, there's a piece of equipment that's being requested, so it shoots it up to $14,000. There was a same large fluctuation from 2015 to 2016, where 2015 was, I think, something like $20,000, and it dropped down to $1,300. So it's based on either expected personnel or equipment for that, for refuse and recycling. It's a large percentage, but a minor cost. I hesitated to put it up there because it was so large percentage. Looking at the breakdown of the levy, I'm sorry.
So the capital replacement funds is proposed at $600,000, and the change is $1.8 million? I was wondering how the change could be more than the proposed.
No, that's incorrect. I'm sorry. $6,001,000 was last year's proposed levy. I think the numbers got skewed on that. $1,866,000 is this year's proposed levy. The change was $1,300, or $1,300 some thousand. I apologize for that. Yeah. The, it's 100, it's still a 210 percent increase, but it's, the increase would be from, the value increase is $1,265,489. The numbers got mixed up there. That doesn't change the rest of it and the total. It was just taken from a table and put on another table, so the numbers got transposed. Yes. Breakdown of the levy, again, you'll see the debt service is a pretty large part. General fund itself is 38 percent. That's the largest portion of the levy. Debt service is second largest. Then capital improvements, fire department, library, or less. Again, a graphical representation of when someone talks about where is our money going? If you look at it as, levy is a dollar 38 cents, if it's going, general funds, 22 to debt service. So it's a part of the, looking at it as, each piece is a part of the whole. As I mentioned in the first couple slides, we do have a number of proposed changes to All told, there's roughly seven full-time, five part-time increases to personnel. For police, one full-time records clerk is added. Fire department, we're looking at adding a fire assistant fire chief slash mechanic and a part-time administrative assistant. In administration, we hope and propose an economic development specialist and a part-time administrative assistant. Planning would include a planning assistant. Public works, instead of the building inspections, taking on some of the facility maintenance issues, we're bringing on a facility maintenance position to manage all of our buildings. Parks will be adding a park maintenance worker. Library, community engagement librarian and a part-time library assistant. Senior center, part-time administrative assistant for the front desk. Again, all told, propose seven full-time employees, five part-time positions. As has been noted a number of times in the past, the City of Verona has been a lean personnel city. All of the departments are working very lean, so each of these positions are necessary for the efficient provision of services to residents and businesses, and also to make sure that if we're providing services, that they're efficient and respond quickly to situations in the city. And then also, as a part of the planning and the economic development, we're taking the situation to become, instead of reactionary, more of, I'm sorry, I forgot the word.
More proactive.
Proactive, I'm sorry. More proactive versus reactionary. For the planning, we'd be able to take on far more plans and land use issues than we are right now, or at least faster than we are right now. And then also economic development, be able to help businesses, look for additional revenue in grant writing, and start making a database of available properties, available sites, so that as the city grows and develops, the last thing you want are vacant properties, so that we're able to help businesses and developers fill the, or fill the sites that they're building. Other operational highlights, with, you'll see that there's a contribution to the Badger Prairie Needs Network that's similar to last year's. For the Verona Road Business Coalition, there's a $15,000 contribution. That's an increase from last year's. But with the amount of traffic and congestion and construction on Verona Road, it is having an impact, not only on those businesses, but on other businesses leading into this, and into the city. $40,000 to develop a visioning program to look at how to develop a 10-year vision for the city, set goals. That will help us guide the direction of future budgets and policies. $25,000 for economic development services. That would help to develop the department for the economic development specialist and help to provide some consulting or consultant material for businesses and developers. As far as the capital levies concerned, capital levy is the capital projects that we're funding out of the general levy. The more we can do, the more we can put into the capital levy, the less we have to borrow for these projects. For public facilities, we've got three projects, improving the parking lot at the old library, renovating the senior center parking lot, and placing the police fiber network within the city center to replace the radio system. Public works, milling and overlay, increasing that amount to $441,722. That meets the goal that the City of Verona has put in place in the past of 50/50, paying for milling and overlay with levy and borrowing, so that you'll see under borrowing, we meet that 50/50 mark. Parks, we set aside within the levy, $350,000 for an aquatic center, replacement of structures, repaving the outdoor ice rink, improving hometown trail system, and replacing the soccer goals, for a total of $381,000. Police, there's three items for $27,100. EMS, establishing the third ambulance service. This is the equipment part of that process for $110,000. And then fire has a number of replacement components and bailout kits, forceful props, total of $66,756. Within the general levy, we're also increasing the amount of funds to replacement, for replacement equipment, as I mentioned in the past. For parks and public works, we're increasing that number to $220,000. For equipment of public works, $110,000. Equipment and IT, I'm sorry, network and IT equipment, $40,000. Facility replacement for the city center, $100,000. As facilities start getting older, we need to start putting some money aside so that we don't have to borrow on operational components. And then facility replacement for public works, $80,000. The total capital levy is $1,356,742. The total replacement fund amount is $510,000, for a total of $1,800,862. The total replacement fund amount is 510,000 for a total of 1,866,742. That, there's a number of projects that still want to be done. There are a lot of requests for additional projects. This is a list of what couldn't be funded through the general levy that we've, we're proposing for general borrowing. The larger projects include pedestrian bike trail construction, the intersection of County M and County PD, and road reconstruction, Park Lane Railroad and Schuman, and the County PD from Woods Road to County M, widening that road. Other projects include traffic signals, downtown redevelopment, the additional amount for the aquatics, leading up to that $2 million for the aquatics facility. County M and PD reconstruction for a total estimated borrowing of 8,429,801. But of that, 2.9 million is still available for the TIF number seven, one-time residual funds. So as projects are picked, if that money is dedicated to the projects on this list, we can reduce that number down to roughly $5 million.
Can you tell me?
Mr. Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you, do you know what we borrowed last year?
Yes. It was roughly 5 million. Can't put my finger on that number right now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. As far as debt service, the debt service levy for general levy, which is the general and library, is 3,264,201. That's a decrease from last year of 222,798. That decrease again is from the notes that are being paid off, mostly for the library at this time, but that's creating that decrease in the debt service. Also, the impact fees offset the levy as well. Impact fees are on newer construction projects. Police impact fee is similar as last year's, 165,000. Fire impact fee is a little less at 119,249. And then library impact fee is $25,000. As far as the fund balance projections, we have not used fund balance this year and don't expect for 2017. So we're estimating the percent of the general fund, roughly 30% of the unassigned fund as a percent of the general fund expenditure. Well within the range that's been established for the city of Verona. As far as the tax increment financing districts, they're included in the budget with narratives discussing their history and the projects. This is a quick note that the downtown will be doing the streetscape improvements with TIF number four and TIF number six, which is the technology in Liberty Parks. We're looking at possible traffic improvements as the development continues to increase in those, both of those parks. That if you have any questions, we'd be open to answer them.
Are there any questions at this point for Mr. McCorskey? Any questions? Just, Jeff, I don't know if you want to put the slide back up again or not, but towards the beginning of the presentation, where we talked about the splash pad and the aquatic center. Just one of the thoughts that I had there is rather than saying X number of dollars for aquatics facility and for the splash pad, is if we were to combine those numbers and put them in the budget as a placeholder for a water feature. And I think it's going to be very difficult for us right now to make a decision as to what that would be, if it would be a pool, a splash pad, or both. So my personal preference is that we put the money in as a placeholder. It comes back to the council at a future date, gives us time to study. And the main reason I'm saying that is certainly I'm not against a pool. I'm not against a splash pad. I would like to see us do both if we possibly could. My greatest concern is that if we put a number in and we commit to building a pool and we don't have an accurate number of what that pool would cost or exactly what we're looking for as far as a pool, because that'll impact the operational costs and everything else. So I just throw that out there that rather than specifying a certain amount, that we combine those two numbers and put it in the budget as a placeholder. That's just my thought. I don't know if there's any other, any other comments or thoughts on that. Mr. Steiner?
Thanks, Mayor. Parks and Rec, we worked real hard and we got that planned out to have that nice splash pad and improvements to our quarry to save that and bring the services up so it would be a little bigger area, a new, changing facility for these people to store their clothes and get into swimming. That's all planned out right now. And by putting in this pool thing, it don't fit. There's not enough room. The way that we have it designed right now, out of that committee, it's set up beautifully with plenty of parking and room for people to come and go. The swimming pool don't belong there right now. The school district has some thought process there too. I've attended their meetings. And they're looking at an aquatic center of some sort at their new facility, wherever that will be and when. But right now, the people have asked us to come up with a splash pad for a good beginning. And I would like to see that plan stay in place because we've done the numbers, we've hired people to plan that for us, and now all of a sudden, we're throwing in this pool idea. And you say that it's coming from the public. Well, maybe it is. But I have not heard one person tell me that we need to have a pool down there next year or in the years to come. And if we do decide to do that, please be prepared to purchase more land. And that would mean maybe the property across the road. I know the mayor has mentioned the old Schrader Wood buildings are terrible. We may have to purchase them and tear them down and maybe create something there. There is some space there. The Matt people, the family, there's some land that is available now. They're trying to sell, but I don't know much about that because it's kind of under the table how that's being discussed and people are not knowing what's really going on. And so I really don't want to delay this aquatic splash pad thing because there's a need for that right now. And we have those plans ready right now. And by throwing more into it, it's going to delay it. We will not get it done for this next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you. I just have a question. What kind of flexibility do we have? So we decided to set aside $2.6 million. What kind of flexibility do we have to spend or not spend it as the year goes on?
Anything that we would do for that borrowing would have to come back to the city council. So typically, we pass resolutions on borrowing in June. We've been doing it annually. So anything we do would have to come back. Even if we leave the $600,000 in for the splash pad, that would come back to a final vote of the council in June. Go ahead, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you. So then if we hypothetically set $2.6 million aside, decisions made in March to only build a splash pad for $600,000, we would only borrow $600,000 in June? Is that kind of how we wouldn't be obligating ourselves to borrow the $2 million?
Right. My thought, and I can let Mr. McCorskey answer as well. If we had designated 2.8 or 2.6 million and we used 600, it would still leave that $2 million designated for a water feature if we do it as I suggest. But we would only borrow for the 600,000 that we would need for the splash pad. Thank you. You're welcome. Mr. Touche, please.
I think Mr. Steiner brings up a good point. The school district is considering some aquatics facility potentially with their high school. And because of that, I actually like the idea of the water feature that you're proposing, Mr. Mayor, because I think the school district is changing the equation for water activities in our city. And I think if we combine the numbers, it gives us flexibility, gives us time for the school to have their referendum to figure out what they're doing and would allow us to kind of hopefully do something that's combined synergy with the schools. So I think it's a good idea to combine the two numbers, be a little less specific, sit on the plans that the parks have done and use that as a base to figure out something in the future.
Thank you. Thank you. And I, the other thing is, you know, as far as if we were to use Fireman's Beach and try and do both a pool and a splash pad, there's just not enough room there to do that. We definitely would have to purchase additional property. So I think the synergy that you talked about is we should continue to have conversations with the school district and perhaps there is something that we can do jointly. But again, it gives us, it buys us some time to do a better job of undertaking a study as to if we should build a pool, if that's what the public wants and where it should be located. And if it's not going to be located at Fireman's Beach, it may make sense to wherever a pool would be located that we would have the splash pad there as well. I was the one that initially proposed having the splash pad down at Fireman's Beach, but I know that there's been a lot of conversation about a pool. And I think it's just better if we take a step back. I'm not opposed to the splash pad, but I think it makes sense in the best interest of the city if we just take a step back and come to a point where we think it's, the decision that we're making is in the best interest of the city. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. As you're talking, I was looking up, there's a, called my petition for a support for an outdoor aquatics center pool in Verona, and there are 558 signatures on there. So there is a lot. And that's everybody what I hear is they want to, they'd rather have a pool than a splash pad. That's probably 10 to 1 for what people talk to me. But I'm kind of open on this. I kind of like combining them at one, but I do understand Mr. Steiner's opinion that if we do take too long, it won't happen next year.
Right. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was at the Plan Commission last week and had an opportunity to see some of the statistical feedback that we got through some of the survey that I believe was driving some of the direction on the splash pad. However, the splash pads seem to take second place behind actually a community pool as far as its dominance and its representation. I echo, I think, some of the thoughts from some of you here that I would highly support consolidating these two and leaving it more general right now. And I think we need to go a caution here with the timeliness as well as people have commented in regards to what the school district is potentially pursuing as relates to a referendum and the unknown as to what type of aquatic facility or pool facility they may or may not do before we kind of short side ourselves here and really trying to accommodate, I think, what our citizens are kind of asking for.
Thank you. Ms. Riki, please.
I don't think we can wait to update Fireman's Park Beach and with or without the splash pad feature being located there. I think that needs to happen within this budget year. And I also don't think that we should depend on the school district to make these decisions and then share with the city. I'd like the city to be more forthcoming in what their needs are as far as a outdoor pool, I think, is what people want. And I'm thinking that's not what the school district wants. And so we have to take that into account. I don't, I don't think we should put really any time and energy or stock into waiting for the school district to decide what they're going to do.
Thank you, Ms. Riki. The other concern that I have is if in this budget process we absolutely commit to building a pool without knowing what the potential cost is, is a great concern. I mean, we're talking here, if we combine it 2.6 or if we leave it separate for 2 million for an aquatics facility. I'm not an expert on pools, but I don't think we're going to get much for $2 million. And I think we could be talking about 5-plus million easily and maybe higher than that. And I think before we commit as a city that we're going to build a pool, and I'm supportive of building a pool, but before we commit to building a pool, we need to make sure what those numbers are. Other questions, comments? Anything else on the budget, not just specifically on this, on this issue? But I think it would be helpful, we don't necessarily have to make that decision tonight, but I think it would be helpful for staff to know what our thoughts are on combining it. Jeff, I'll just ask you, do you need to know that tonight? Or is that something that we could do next week yet?
I don't think it's.
It really doesn't impact the bottom line.
No, it doesn't. And I don't think, as far as the advertising, it was identified separately through that. So I don't think that would be a.
Okay. Any other questions on the budget? Questions or comments? If not, Jeff, I saw that you had an amendment sheet here. You want to talk about that?
No, you're talking about exactly what I was going to ask.
Okay. Mr. McCorskey, please.
Yes. From, we're hoping that we'd be able to get any amendments that you'd want to include into the discussion for next Monday sometime this week so that we have time, hopefully by Thursday, so that we would be able to have that for the packet to go out on Friday. So if you can, if you do have an amendment that you'd like to offer, provide that to us and then the discussion for that amendment would be on Monday.
Go ahead, Mr. Touche.
Will we see the amendments before Monday if they are submitted by Thursday?
They would be in the packet, that's correct.
Okay. I want to have time to think about whatever amendments come out.
Any other questions related to this presentation? If there's no other business, I would accept the motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Mr. Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stewart, was that? We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carried, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.